The Frankford Board of Commissioners and the
Commissioner Walbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner May.
Present.
Commissioner Unger.
Present.
Mayor Wilkerson.
We might, a little housekeeping rule to state beauty. Now you're ready to speak, there's some background noise. Evidently something in the background, some, on somebody's microphone. And from the county side, we want to welcome everybody to this special meeting with, with, it's a great honor to be with the city commission tonight. And we're excited about this and we're excited about our future. So Tamara, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Squire Sebastian.
All right, Sebastian.
Here, here, someone had muted, I guess, everyone. Here.
Squire Blackburn.
Present.
Squire Moller.
Present.
Squire Tracy.
Here.
Squire Booth.
Here.
Squire Moore.
Squire Moller. Squire Moller.
Moore.
Moore or Moller?
Moore.
Okay. We can't hear you, Lambert.
I think the auto mute has caused him some consternation.
Andrew, can you help Squire Moore out, please? It looks like it's working, Andrew, see if it's working.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear.
Okay.
I don't want to hear it up there, though. Well, here.
Thank you, Judge Wells.
I'm here, but I want to apologize to everybody or just let everybody know this is all new. Let's, let's all try to bend and shape ourselves with, with what's happening and most importantly, let's look at the outcomes of, of tonight. So let's, let's all hang in there together and, and we're excited about this opportunity. I'm here and thank you for calling the roll. We're all present, Mayor.
All right, so we do have a quorum and, and to echo the judge, this is, you know, this is new to us too, this is our first opportunity to do a joint session, so let's, let's have fun with this. The purpose of this special call meeting is it's limited to discussion of the mutual vision, interests and opportunities for economic growth for our community. And the elected officials of the city and county are the active participants. The agenda does not include the discussion of personnel or individuals in particular. And of course, no official action will be taken tonight. We do have a moderator tonight, Tad Long from the Kentucky League of Cities. He will be facilitating and I will turn it over to him and let him introduce himself.
Thank you, Mayor, Judge, Commissioners, Magistrates. It's a pleasure for me to be with you this evening. And I am always excited to work with cities and counties when they're trying to establish a vision to move forward and, and to think about the possibilities and opportunities that may present themselves. The mayor has stated the purpose of the special called meeting and so we're limited to the parameters of that. But I just wanted to start out with, with this. It's not often the cities and counties work together. I don't know if that's a revelation to you or not, but I have had the opportunity to do that in places across the state. Morehead and Rowland County, down in Hart County and Hopkins County and the cities that are associated with those, those counties. And it's always a very positive thing to see people wanting to work together. So I'm very excited about this meeting and my role tonight is to try to, to moderate the discussion and to get us to an end point. And so what are we trying to accomplish tonight? Success would be if, at the end, everybody has a clear vision about the two, three, maybe four things that the city and the county can agree upon. And that could establish a possible direction forward. One thing that I've learned over the years as Community and Economic Development Manager at the league is that when communities are planning and, and we do this a lot with our, our city counties, our city councils and commissions and mayors, it always starts first with a conversation about the big picture. And that's what we want to focus on tonight. So what I would like to do, I'm going to start, I'd like to give everyone an opportunity to just share a couple or three things about your vision for Frankfurt and Franklin County. I hesitate ever to ask public officials to limit their comments, but I'm going to tonight. We've got, I think, 11 or 12 on here and, or 10 on here. And if we each take five minutes, then, then we're an hour in. So if you would do that, that would be very helpful. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that along with a vision, sometimes you get into strategies and tactics and that sort of thing. I don't want us to, if we go too far down the rabbit hole, we'll never get to the conclusion. So I'd like to keep the, the conversation in general about the goals and vision and things that the city and county can do by working together. And if we have other, those other topics, then perhaps we can sum off in a parking lot and come back and revisit those at a later time. I know a lot of people are really interested in this topic, a lot of people have a vested interest in it. And it would be my hope that following this meeting, there would be opportunities for other people to join in the conversation. But tonight, it's about you. And so I ask that, that we be respectful to one another and give each other their fair due. I like to tell folks, I used to be an elected official, I got my votes just like everybody else did and, and I wanted to have my say, but I also want to respect others because they're in the same seat. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to call on Judge Wells first and then the mayor, and then I'm going to go back and forth between the commission and the magistrates, if that's okay. And we'll, we'll, we'll take it that way, take it that way. So Judge Wells, would you mind to start us off tonight?
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to and your, and I believe your, your question is what do you want the community to look like five to 10 years from now? Our vision?
Yes.
That's, that's very exciting. And when you think about that, there are so many things that come into, into play, but I'll touch on a few. And I'd like to first of all, say that I hope this community, and it is a good community, it can be better, and I intend for it to be the best. And as part of being the best, I want people, I want other communities across our state to come and look at what we're doing in Frankfurt. What have we, what is Frankfurt doing that is bringing so many new jobs, so many new opportunities, so much development, so much technology? All of those kinds of things improve our lifestyle and make our community better. As part of that, I see this, I see right now, the bourbon industry in Franklin County just about, about halfway where it really could be. We've got about 300,000 people that come in to increase our tourism in our community. I've, I'm hoping, I've had talks with and I hope that it happens soon, that Jim Bean opens up a, a gift shop, a tourism area, and we double the 300,000 or at least double to 600,000 and, and more. So tourism in, in five to 10 years should just be booming, especially with our bourbon industry. I see our downtown Frankfurt being a, a model of, of what a community can, can look like. I see it being a hub for retail, I see it as a hub for restaurants, I see it as a great place to come because we have so many breweries going on in, in our downtown community. So I see a lot of growth in our downtown community and I see a thriving parcel B and C. Also, as part of the development of Frankfurt in the future, I see a hotel, a larger hotel downtown or an expansion of the Capital Plaza Hotel with another convention center or a conference, conference center downtown. I also see KSU doubling its size and becoming such a, such a great HBC university and will, that we'll all be so proud of. And that growth will be important to it as well as our community. Last but not least, in five or 10 years, I see us having one government and we're all working together as one unit. So would you see how all that plays out? But that's, that's my vision and thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you, Judge. That, that's an ambitious vision. Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Mayor Wilkerson, would you please share your vision with the group?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to and this is exciting. So I, I echo some of the judge's ambitions. I think we're looking at, you know, looking out 10 years from now, we were looking backwards. I would, I would want to be known as the city in Kentucky that has the most innovative, creative and inclusive population in the state. I think, I want Frankfurt to have that reputation. And to do that, I think we need to focus on trying to be the best place for people to live, work and play. And I think when we think about working, we want to focus our economic development efforts. If we're looking forward 10 years from now, I'd like to be known as a community that, that has a robust remote work population, that has people that can, that aren't geographically constrained to where they do their jobs, that they choose to live here because of our quality of life. Beyond that, I want our, our tourism is something that is, is coming right now anyway. I think if we're looking here 10 years from now, we will have successfully taken advantage of the tourists that are coming here for our bourbon industry and being the state capital, our heritage tourism. I think that's something I want to make sure we take advantage of. And then also want to, you know, we have other industries as well besides state government. There are, there are plenty of occupations that feed off of state government. I want to make sure that we cultivate those. There's a lot of contract jobs that can be located right here in Frankfurt. They don't necessarily have to work with state government, but they can make their revenue off of state government. Of course, tourism is another one I've mentioned. I do echo the judge on, I think 10 years from now, it's going to be critical for us to have a new hotel or two, a new convention or conference space to take advantage of these, these opportunities. I think I can envision in 10 years that we will have taken advantage of the vacant lots and infill development opportunities downtown. I want, I think we should focus on our core over the next 10 years and really focus on the density downtown. We have much more room to grow for new residents. Along those lines, I'd like to have more, if we're looking at 10 years from now, more options for housing for all income levels and all ages. I think there's huge opportunity there. And if we bring the tourists and if we have more people who are living here with discretionary income, we can support more specialty shops, more retail, more bars, more restaurants, more breweries, more micro distilleries, what have you. We're, we're going to get people here, not only because of our low cost of living and our geographically advantageous location, but also because of our quality of life. And over the next 10 years, I want to focus on developing our park system. I want it to be world class. I want our riverfront to be developed. And, and that also ties into our tourism as well. And I, and like the judge, I can see 10 years from now, we have a unified government so that we can have a singular focus that will not only improve our services for residents of the entire county, but also reduce the cost.
Thank you, Mayor. Another ambitious agenda, that's good. So if, if you're, and if you're like me, you're sitting there now thinking, well, they put a lot on the table, somebody got my idea. And that's okay. Every idea doesn't have to be new and I would ask you to do this if you wouldn't mind. So if there is something that has already been mentioned that you, is on your list too, that you agree with, it would be very helpful if you would just repeat it. And this is how we can come to understand what there is agreement on with everyone. And so share your list, if it's already been said, that's okay. And I'm going to go ahead and just call on next, I think, Squire Sebastian, would you mind to speak next?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Long. I, I appreciate the opportunity for all of us to come together and, and the opportunity to speak tonight. Probably about 10 months ago, I had written a very comprehensive document that was shared with everyone on this call, was shared in the local newspaper about the very topic that we're talking about. So I'll hearken back to some of that because unfortunately, Mr. Long, you may not have that document, it may not have been shared with you. We certainly have a number of opportunities that we could capitalize on. And I, I really encourage our community to embrace new opportunities and consider the following sectors. People have talked a lot about some of the very specific things. I think there are sectors that we need to look at into within our community to begin to grow. And that would be things like education. You know, we're within 100 miles of between 30 and 40 institutions of higher education, whether that be technical training and/or colleges and universities. That would help us embrace, embrace not only education, but trades and apprenticeship, which are critical because we are living in an age where you no longer have to have a two or four year degree to make an immediate impact on the community. And we need individuals in trades and apprenticeships to assist our, our community to make it thrive. I also see an opportunity for agricultural development. You know, we only need to look as far as Lexington and what Altec has done in merging sciences with agriculture. We can do that right here in our community through the 300 acre Harold R. Benson Research and Development Farm that Kentucky State University had. We have the top aquaculture program in the United States. We need to find a way to marry institutions of higher education like Kentucky State with our local high, high schools. We have folks that we could put on a number of pathways. And fortunately, you know, Kentucky State has a, a credential that you can get in, in brewing and distilling. We need to take advantage of that for at least the sector in our community. I also think that we need to reimagine manufacturing here. No longer do people just stand and watch things go by on conveyor belts. You know, there are smart technologies that we have the capacity to grow because we are within that 100 mile radius of a number of individuals who are coming out and they want things like quality of life. They want to be able to get out and canoe on the Elkhorn Creek 15 minutes after they take off work and do things with their family. I also think healthcare is critical. And again, I hearken back to Kentucky State University that has a leading nursing program. You know, we, we can be a critical element in the supply chain if we reimagine how manufacturing and healthcare can come together in our community. I also, I've heard tourism, I can talk about that longer than anybody on this call today. And I also talk about, I think quality of life is critical. And have several ways that we can get into that with the comprehensive plan, with some of the things that we anticipate doing with changing our zoning ordinances so that we can focus not only on growth, but on smart growth, which includes infill. So, Mr. Long, you probably better pass this along to somebody else because I can take up the two and a half hours very easily.
Thank you, Squire Sebastian, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Your passion too. Commissioner May, would you mind to, to share your thoughts with us next?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Long, thank you to Frank County Fiscal Court and rest of the VOC members, we appreciate it. Judge Mayor, thank you so much. I think that, yeah, it sounds like we're all pretty much on the same page thus far that we have an amazing opportunity. I'm a firm believer that Frankfurt is set up right now with what we have in place, that we don't really have to reinvent the wheel. I think we know, know what, what our strengths are and what our opportunities are. From tourism, of course, tourism, of course, the low hanging fruit, I love it. I think we need to have a aggressive public transportation program that is tourism focused for entertainment weekends and when we have events, make it easy for people to get around. I absolutely think that connectivity is going to be huge. We see the projects that are happening right now and connectivity literally physically and then both, I really appreciate what the judge had to say about thinking about our downtown district and how we look at that as a unique opportunity to showcase what Frankfurt really offers from making it very special and specific. I think we have an amazing opportunity, as we talked about with Kentucky State University, to start bringing, you know, downtown tailgate parties and exciting opportunities into our community when, when they're playing. I think that we, you know, we need to be aggressive in looking in the 10 year mark as far as our clean and renewable resources, the way in which we power our community. I think we have an amazing opportunity, certainly with, with hotels. We know that there are projects right now are underway. I had a great conversation today with some people that are bringing a project into downtown that were more than happy to share that information with the Wayland Group out of Oval, investors. People are excited to be here, we can be open and welcome. I think a cohesive image, you know, coming off the interstate, coming from 127, coming from US 60N into the, the bourbon tourism would be great, a total aesthetic package to keep consistency. And I absolutely think we need to be work, working on diversifying our workforce. I think we have a lot of creative ways in which we can do that and continue to leverage on, on what we're doing well. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and I will keep it brief and short, but I think, yeah, I'm just so excited and I know, I know we're headed in the right direction, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May, I appreciate that. Squire Blackburn, would you mind to go next?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I want, I want to again thank the Board of Commissioners and everybody on this call today and the magistrates. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to, you know, stating our vision for the community is a wonderful thing. I believe it gets everybody's wheels turning and, and seeing how we, we have so many great creative minds in our town. I think with me, I'm not an economic development expert, but I come from, from a, a direction of education and construction. And I feel that a lot of that should be driven, community driven. We, we need to rely on our education. We, we have our best and brightest here in Franklin County. They leave, they leave to find jobs, they leave to find opportunities that they don't have here. I would like to see our comprehensive plan and, and, and that aspect of how we move forward, help decide where and we have these opportunities for growth. I don't want to see it compiled and, and, and making areas that are very congested and compound the problems that they already have. You know, I think, you know, we weren't, we weren't really, you know, deciding to talk about how we do this, but I think the how is, is just as important as what. I think how we do it is going to get us there. So I think we need the best and the brightest in our community to be a part of it. Not just the local officials, but you know, the developers, the, the educational folks, how these boards are made up to make these decisions, where these folks live in our communities. That should be the driving force to where we do expand on all of these opportunities that we have, you know, like, like Squire Sebastian had mentioned, we have all of these educational institutions that are so close to us. We have a career and technical center here in Franklin County. We've got students with apprenticeships, we have a lot of contractor businesses in this town that are sending kids, their apprentices for free, they're paying for it. We have all levels of education coming out of our community. And we need to capitalize on that and keep those folks here and provide those opportunities here. You know, a couple of folks said the remote workers. That's a huge, a huge market that we could capitalize here in Franklin County. But I think how we get there is just as important as where we're going. So I'll leave it at that and let some of these other folks talk. Thank you so much.
I appreciate that. Appreciate your thoughts. I'm going to call on Commissioner Thompson next, if you wouldn't mind sharing your thoughts with us.
First of all, I want to say thanks to all the members of the two bodies, Judge Wells and Mayor Wilkerson. I know I interrupted a lot of meetings asking for us to have this meeting. And I'm very happy that we are actually having that tonight. When it comes to what my interests are and what I see as a benefit of these meetings is, a real driving force in my mind has to be economic development. Economic development is something that is close to my heart. It's something that, as I've grown older in this town, I've been able to tell you as a businessperson and someone who, you know, has had to make payroll and worries about taxes and wants more amenities in this town, economic development is where it's at. And I have dedicated the last few years in learning everything I can about economic development. I echo all the words that have already been spoken so far. So much so that I agree with Judge Wells that while the dirty word of merging governments is always scary to people, one of the things that I do think we need to do is we seriously need to consider merging the resources, combining resources. I think that goes in a lot of areas. That doesn't mean we have less employees or less duties. But I think if you look at our obligations such as the waste management, parks, things of that nature, there's just a lot of savings just from the top by doing that, inefficiency as well. We are all one community, whether you live out Shadr Ferry or whether you live on Capitol Avenue. You know, we're all Frankertonians and most of us are born and raised here. So I want to make sure that there's some equity there with all the folks in town that no matter where you are, you're getting the same level of service and you're able to know who to call to get things done. And if you just happen to cross over in the backyard and there's an imaginary line there that you can or can't get things done any better. From an economic development standpoint, I am dedicated to figuring out how to make parcels BNC work. I am not against parcels BNC in any way. But as a guy that is a fiscally-minded conservative guy, I focus on the money, the finances, and how is it going to happen without taking on a lot of debt? How's it going to happen in a manner in which people benefit besides developers and outside interests? And I think the only way we do that, the only way we get parcels BNC to work is to significantly increase the presence of the tourism corridor down Wilkinson Boulevard. I think that Wilkinson Boulevard, I'm sorry, I just named it after the mayor there for a second. Sorry, Mayor. And I think what we have to do is we have to embrace our local distilleries to the point that, you know, Frankfurt is the cradle. It is the birthplace of the modern bourbon industry. 1897, the Bottle-in-Bond Act, it happened here thanks to E.H. Taylor. We have to embrace that. You know, we are the home of the world's greatest and most decorated bourbon in the world. And the minute we realize that as a community is the moment that we take that next step in forming a partnership, not only with them, but also bringing that to the nation and the states around us to know that Frankfurt is where this place is. And not only will you get to visit there, there's other distilleries around. But before you go to those, there's great restaurants and there's theaters and there's shops and there's all these things down here. But you've got to develop that tourism corridor to make that happen. And I think all that ties in with what the county has been discussing with their Parks Department out at Lakeview. And I think you bring in a bunch of soccer parents who have to be here in the hot sun for eight hours watching their kids play. And then they have the ability to go on a tour the next morning and then brunch somewhere in downtown. That's all things that we don't have right now because what happens now is people come into Frankfurt, they go to their event or they go on their tour at Buffalo Trace. And then not $1 is spent anywhere else in Frankfurt, not even in our gas stations probably. And I want to change that. I think once we do that, we then create a corridor and a means for people to want to stay in Frankfurt. And just lastly, I think we have to focus on growth, not just economic growth, but growth in general. We have not had the growth that we need to match up with other communities. And that's not a slight on anybody. We just have to focus on that and figure out what are they doing that we're not. And we need to figure out what those things are. And I think we have to team up with our plant board. We have to team up with our school districts. We have to team up with our financial institutions. We have to team up with these stakeholders to be able to provide the incentives and the amenities that large corporations want and need. We haven't done a good job of that up to this point. And I think the more creative we are, the better we will be in the future. I think there is no dumb idea or bad idea when it comes to economic development so long as you don't waste the citizens' money. And if you can bring in, you know, a job and you can show that I put in this much money and it got us this many jobs, then that's the way we need to do it. And Frankfurt has to embrace new media. We have to embrace new media. It's the only way we're going to be able to promote our city. I don't know how many people saw the TikTok families, family. And they presented a two-minute video for the Bourbon on the Banks. It was phenomenally done. They do it on their own time. It had, I don't know, Lane, you might remember, it had 50,000 views or something in like 12 hours. It has, you know, 100,000 views now. It is so further beyond what we are doing to promote our city at this point. And we have to get out of our own way and our old ways of doing things, our own knowledge base. And we got to learn what's going to bring all the kids in, if you will, which is anybody younger than me, which is most of the population. So I appreciate everything that everyone has said. I agree with just about everything everybody said at this point. I don't think we're very far off in getting some of these things done like Commissioner May said, you know, low-hanging fruit. So I'm excited about it and I'm going to keep working hard and I'm anxious to hear what everybody else says. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Appreciate that. I'm going to call on Squire Mueller now, if you wouldn't mind to share your thoughts with us. I think we're having an issue with hearing you.
In the city and county for being on here, you know. Can you hear me? Hello?
I can now.
All right, you got me now?
I do.
Can everybody hear me? All right, thank you, Mr. Long. So I do would like to thank Judge Wells, Mayor Wilkinson, city and county staff for putting this meeting together. You know, I think it's been a long time coming. We've talked about this meeting for a while. I think it's a passion of everybody on this call and our community to kind of really figure out what economic development looks like for us. You know, for me, you know, economic development is kind of, you know, it's about sustainability. It's about growing smart. It's about infill. It's about so many different things. You know, the one thing I've heard a lot since I've been in office is I'm tired of our children going to school and never coming home for jobs. So I think that's a big push for everybody. For me, one of the biggest things that I, I think people were saying, what does Frankfurt look like, you know, in five, 10 years? To me, I think the one thing that we've missed a lot of is the parks, the river, the Elkhorn Creek. You know, being able to somehow connect those for biking, hiking, kayak, boats. I think we could potentially be an outdoor Mecca. And it wouldn't really be that hard to do. So to me, that's a big vision that I think is very easy to grab. You know, I think like Commissioner Thompson said, I mean, we have the project going on at Lakeview Park that could really change the direction of this community, you know, to give people, not just young, but older people, a place to go and do activities and not have to go to other communities to watch our kids play sports or pay hotel rooms and stuff. I believe we could host those right here in our own backyard. So I too agree with most of what everybody on here has talked about. So I don't want to repeat anything else. And again, I appreciate Mr. Long for doing this for us. And I'm looking forward to a good meeting and I hope there's many more down the road because I truly feel like communication is the key to everything. And so the more we can communicate, we can become better leaders for all the organizations that work with us and our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you, Squire Mueller. I appreciate that. Appreciate your comments. I'm going to call next on, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Commissioner Unger or Unger? I'm so sorry.
All right, it's Unger.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Long. And I am, of course, honored to be here with everyone today. You know, when I think of our city's future, I get really excited and get goosebumps. And looking at the faces on the screen and all the partners that we have in our community, I know that growth that will take place in the future will not only be smart, but equitable in our approach. I think in, you know, in five to 10 years, I really see a Frankfurt that can be more connected, like many of you have already said, connected to our stakeholders, industries, you know, K-State, just to name a few. But I also think we can be more connected in the way of, you know, walkable neighborhoods, connectivity from one area of town to the next, to mixed-use spaces, more housing options, like many of you mentioned, improved parks and amenities. Also, like the mayor said, I believe that enhancing quality of life for our citizens really will, it won't only retain them, but it will attract new citizens of all ages that want to live, work, and play here. I do, I see development in the next five to 10 years that shows we're stewards of our land and our property. So many of you have mentioned infill development. I think that's very important and should be a focus of our city. Targeting empty lots, empty buildings, finding businesses that are unique and that can fit in those spaces is going to be really important moving forward. I also believe that growth should not come at the expense of our historic features or our natural assets. I need, I think we need to focus and really highlight what those are as well, like Michael mentioned. You know, our creek, our river, our parks, and also our historic sites. So I do think we're, you know, we're all on the same page. We want to see the best for our county and our city. And I appreciate everybody and excited to see us continue to work together and communicate and really work towards a better future for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Unger. I appreciate that very much. I'm going to call on Squire Tracy next, if you wouldn't mind, share your thoughts with us.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And I too would like to thank everyone for participating in tonight's meeting. I'm sure that most all of us will talk before it's over about recruiting, retaining, attracting. Tourism, like the others have said, you know, we have the world's best bourbon distillery in our backyard, 400,000-plus tourists a year visited. The big question is how do we capitalize on that? How do we keep them here overnight? We have an exciting park project going on. My hopes are it will be a park that the community will be proud of, but also a park, a destination park, that helps fill the restaurants and hotels on the weekend. Unfortunately, I feel like we do not have a clear-cut vision on who we are and/or who we want to be as a community. At one time, we were known as a state government town. I'm not sure that's accurate now. You know, I would ask all of you, who are we as a community and what do we want to be? As of right now, Franklin County is on the same economic path as Owen and Henry. How has your community changed for the better over the last 20 years? Ask yourself that. What is our economic development strategy? It always comes back to no plan, no vision. For example, individuals allowed the convention center to be torn down with no plan on how its functions would be replaced. No vision. What would our community look like if and when state government made massive changes to its benefits packages and/or how it operates on a daily basis? We need a strategic planning process, one that will assist the community in creating a smart, long-term economic development plan. One that will get everyone aligned, one that will be financially rewarding, one based off assets and strengths. Collectively deciding on doing it. Have a professional moderator who will listen, have multiple sessions, listening groups, feedback sessions, et cetera. Identify community's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Bring in a professional site selector to evaluate potential infill and development sites. Squeezing industry into one location, as we know, only creates issues. Issues with traffic, sewer, stormwater runoff, roads, et cetera. Together, we'll decide what the economic development strategy for Franklin County will be. We have lots of valuable resources available to us and we're capable of doing great things. Let's put our heads together and move our community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Squire Tracy. I appreciate your comments. I'm going to call on Commissioner Waldridge next.
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, I can.
Sorry, it was blinking. I thought that was weird. Again, you know, I won't reiterate, but, you know, just saying thank you for allowing this meeting to happen. This has been an ongoing process for a year or so now that we've been wanting to have these meetings. So I appreciate those that took the time to set this meeting for us. First, I would say that I don't think that as officials, as we all ran on our own campaigns of why we wanted to be officials and where we are in leading this community, I never think that we have an issue on where we want to go or where we want to be in five years. I think everyone's voices that has been heard here, I would agree with every one of you and every single thing. I think the focus that we're going to have to focus on is how we get there. And I know Magistrate Tracy sort of touched on that. And we have to focus on our leadership as officials, county and city. We have to work together. We have to work together as, we're one county. We're one county where a city falls into it. The county folks have to come into the city for their quality of life and things that they need. So it is one place. It's one opportunity. And we are stronger if we work together in some of these issues. In order to get this done, I feel that we're going to have to work together as city and county, as well as all of our organizations that are also working to move Frankfurt forward and Franklin County forward. We have to be on the same page to work forward. and allowing, you know, uh for our residents and then local business owners and visitors, and we must respect the past by all means, we must respect that, but we must focus on the future. I think some of you touched on it, we must be innovative, we must have inclusiveness, we must be evolutionary, we must be interconnected and belonging for all, sometimes we forget that part. Inclusiveness is not enough, everyone must belong and have a place and see that there is a place for them in our community. For a thriving and sustainable economic e- economy, I think first and foremost, we have to see how we can stop having these long leases and these these leases that go on for hundreds of years that put handcuffs on us to not be able to build and thrive in our own communities. We have to get around those, we have to break those down, and we have to understand as as we're leaders within our time, that's the, that's the amount of time we should have a lease, we should never sign a lease for 100 years when we won't be here in 100 years, so we have to think about the future. I also think as far as the thriving and sustainability of our economy, definitely riverfront development. Uh, our businesses downtown, our local businesses who are already pushing forward, we need to help them grow stronger. We need to fill those empty buildings beside them and allow our downtown to grow. Um, I think we also need to push our school systems to be stronger, uh, school systems that will also bring people here for that's stronger in uh academically, that's stronger recreationally, that's stronger in opportunities for our high schoolers who want to come back to Frankfurt, um, and also just stronger in college readiness readiness as well as other jobs. I think also, um, we should concentrate on the city-county asset stewardship where we are consistently upkeeping and completing our streets for great navigation around our city and counties. Sidewalks, buildings, sewers, indoor and outdoor recreation, signage and trails. These things bring people to Frankfurt, want people to come back, and we must upkeep them and continue that when we're building the city-county stewardship, we must always anticipate the future needs of what Frankfurt is. All of the things that we've shared five and 10 years we want from now, we have to think about now and not just let them be a verbal, oh, I would like, we have to say, how are we going to implement to get there? Our implement stage right now is just horrible, we think about what's in front of us today and what's going to happen tomorrow, and we wonder why we're not moving forward because we're not thinking and anticipating what we want and how we want to get forward. So we have to anticipate what we want in the forward. We have to think bigger and we have to think forward. I also think KSU, as many touched, um, Commissioner Unger touched as well, KSU is huge. KSU thrives, our city thrives, we need to have more partnerships with Kentucky State University. We need to be more supportive in sports in Kentucky State University. We need, that we need to in uh implement and and help provide more access and more people to their award-winning programs that they have right here in our city. We also need to push and have more opportunities for internships for all of their students. They shouldn't have to go back home for an internship, we're right here, we have to welcome Kentucky State, we have to become one community, and Kentucky State has to be a driving factor in that. The environmental stewardship must be a a focus as well. We must focus on what we're going to do about recycle, since I've been a commissioner, we've been talking about recycle and we are still in the same place. Continuing trying to get contracts, we have to think bigger, is it a recycle center? Do we team up with other counties and cities uh in surrounding areas to build something to help us with our recycle? We can't be talking about recycling in 10 years from now, we have to be acting on recycling. Also, the invasive plants, we have to do something with our invasive plants, they are moving forward, praise God with Chris Schimmler and them, but we have to be able to save our riverbank, if we continue to be um overtaken with invasive species, we will not have a riverbank and it will not be safe for people to be on our river, so we have to be cognizant of that and also just can protect our beautification around Frankfurt of our natural species. Also, in the uh environment stewardship would be solar opportunities, we do need to start thinking solar because solar is now. And we must work with Frankfurt Plant Board, city and county, on what that looks like and how we can improve that in Frankfurt moving forward. Not last but not least, I think we must also concentrate on the residents in our community. Their involvement on decisions, their involvement in our meetings, transparency with them. We are nothing more but servants of our community, and in order for us to move forward, we must completely be transparent and be vocal and allow them to be vocal with us. We must have inclusiveness, we must have a great quality of life for them. Also, we must provide them community engagement and entertainment that want them to come out and communicate with each other and become a stronger community together and them to want to stay in Frankfurt and to bring others in our to, in others into our community. My last comment would be, we must get be getting back to our purpose, our purpose as leaders in our community for residents, we are serving on their behalf and because of their vote, we are their voice. We must do what's best for them and not what's best for ourselves. We must speak whole for our community and for us to move forward and get Frankfurt where it needs to be in five or 10 years. We must speak with our community and let our community be heard, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waldridge, I appreciate your comments. Squire Booth, would you please talk with us next?
Yes, I'm not, oh, used to go to meeting, excuse me. But um, I have heard some really wonderful statements here tonight, and it makes me feel good that different attitudes are expressed because we need to have that give and take so we don't go too far in one direction or we don't go too far back in another direction. So I I feel good about Frankfurt and Franklin County, I've seen a lot of progress in the time I've lived here. And compared to my hometown, we're miles ahead, and I guess our our people don't appreciate that because they live here and just know what they don't know. But uh, we have a lot of people that have moved to Frankfurt and decided to stay here because it is a progressive community. And our history certainly complements that. I'm going to talk about the big picture and the development of the country. You know, Kentucky was, should have been the 14th state, for some reason Maine got in there. But uh, we're the 15th and the first one past the big mountains that kept everybody back for a while. So we have a lot of traditions that go back a long way. And we shouldn't sneer at those traditions, we should understand why they were made in the first place. And I believe that the um way of life we have now grew naturally out of our past. I remember when solar was just a bad word, you didn't say, you had to wash your mouth out of soap, but now it's the future, and it's going to be the future no matter what we say about it. I don't believe that economic development for me, I used to think those words were cuss words, you know, economic development, that meant that we were going to have more traffic, more waste, more uh dirty places, that's what I thought. But if we manage it, and we can because we are the elected officials, I think that it is good for us because every citizen needs to have a job of well, well, we can't expect well-paying jobs for everybody, but we can expect a cost of living salary for everyone. And I think we've gone a long way in ensuring that. We have a lot of organizations and groups in this city and county that want to see that happen and are working toward it. And those organizations like Envision Franklin County, of which I am a member, have become respected and listened to. It is like a voice that people can hear. That's why I'm glad that we have these different uh attitudes on growth and economic development. The county, beautiful county, I live in the, in the most beautiful part of the county. But there are plenty of people that still live from the land, and those people should be more respected than they are now. And I believe that we can um develop more to show off what they do. For instance, Kentucky is one of the leading beef production states in the nation. Hard to believe, but it's true because we have grassland, lots of grassland. And those farmers raise the cattle and then take them to market. And that's how they make their living. I was uh called to because one of the people that lived next to a farm was mad because the well, I can't think of that word for it. I guess the uh trailer that they took the uh beef to market in made a big rut in their land, in their lawn, you know? I was thinking, do you not want this man to make money to live on? Things like that. And the county fair, all those beautiful animals that are, are displayed. The state fair is still going on because of animals that are brought there from all over the state. And our county fair has animals that have come from all parts of the county. And they are admired and of course, um, well, anyway, I'm not going to go on that. But the uh smart growth that several people mentioned in their speeches, I'm a big believer in that. And we do not need more subdivisions out in the county because this county has to pay for developing roads to go to them. And they have to um see that they have sewer or, well, not sewer, but septic tanks and, well, sewer, we want that sewer, yes, we do. But uh, things like that, those things need to be more uh regulated. And I don't want to say we must do anything or we must do this or we must do that because what we do is going to come grow naturally out of our progression as a progressive community. And I believe in that, and I, I feel like if we keep our economic development from being sprawling, dirty, and unnecessary um activity, we can do that, and we really don't have to do that much, we just keep our eye on things, and that's what I think, I think we have a good future. And I thank you for giving us the opportunity to express that, thank you.
Thank you, Squire Booth, I appreciate your comments, thank you so much. Squire Moore, being last does not by any means mean being least, and I'm looking forward to your comments, and I'm going to give the floor over to you now.
Well, in this case it does, sir. Thank you and everyone else for being here, though. My comments are most, mostly I'm for like keeping up basic services. If we get all this economic development, which is what we need very badly, and get this uh tourism, we don't have the roads for it, we have them within Frankfurt, but I-64 is the most efficient in Franklin County of its whole existence because they keep kicking the can down the road because it's going to be the most expensive to upgrade. And if we don't get six lanes through Franklin County across the river, uh, growth is going to be hard in Franklin County. And uh entertainment, we need that, we need the uh some kind of convention center, I don't, I don't want to go and be dead on that. That's going to be a big problem. But the roads and bridges, trash picked up by our protection, all that stuff is most important to me, and we need to do it with two governments, not one. And that's about all I have to say about that, thank you.
Thank you, Squire Moore, I appreciate your comments, so I want to make sure I got everyone, I I believe that I did, did I miss anyone? Mayor, Judge, you tell me, I got everybody? Okay, good, all right, so um I do appreciate your comments and, you know, having um worked in a lot of places, what I, what I hear tonight are some common themes that 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 seemed like most everyone agreed on, and I want to make sure that uh everyone understands that the the comments and all the suggestions that have been made, um, you know, we will take notes on them and make sure that everything is is in the record and all that. But here were the things that I heard, and I would like to get your reaction to this a- and see if if we're on the right track, so. You know, I had, I had hoped that when we started, and I've been anticipating this for a while, that maybe we would agree on two or three things. Sounds like there's agreement on several things, and that's really a a good thing, so here's what I heard. I heard pretty much unanimous agreement on tourism in all its various kinds, that is welcoming people into your community and having things for them to do. The second thing I heard was quality of life. And that encompasses a lot of things that that you all talked about, um, you know, the connectivity, the parks, the green space, the having opportunities, things to do, places to shop, things to have for your families. I heard a lot of talk, a discussion about uh education and workforce development training and jobs. Several mentioned technology and infrastructure. And then there were several comments about um downtown, about infill, about retail, about repurposing, redeveloping, and smart growth. So those were the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven things that I, oh, and the the other thing too that that I know that it's important uh from a county perspective is the importance of agriculture and and preserving the natural environment and those sorts of things, so. I think that that covers about everything uh in terms of what's important in terms of economic, um, the economic development picture. Economic development has extended far beyond just landing a factory and having having some jobs, it's 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 really community growth a- at its at its core, and so making sure that you have the things in place to make that happen are are is what's important. So let me just get an initial reaction, the things that I mentioned off, mentioned. Did you hear them the same way? Are those the 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 recurring themes that that we've captured? Was there anything critical that I left out of that just brief little summary? Anything?
So let me, there's a lot of talk about Kentucky State University and how Kentucky State University is part of our community and and in a growth, more growth towards that, getting them sharing their relationship.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, I I thought you were probably putting that underneath of education.
I did, yeah.
But I think, um, you know, for me, I think we want to be more intentional with just putting them underneath of of educational, I I don't want to speak for everyone, but I would say that we want, I think we should list KSU as its own entity in that because we want to be really intentional with KSU, so I bet I felt like you added that in there with education, so.
I did, and 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 I'm fine with making it its own, its own topic, so there's a, there's a lot to unpack within the university. I did, and, and, and I'm fine with making it its own, its own topic. So there's a, there's a lot to unpack within the university and certainly it's a, it's a huge piece of growth and economic development alone. So anything else? Yes, Squire Booth.
Well, I'm a little prejudiced in this area, I guess, but I, I thought that we should keep the land and the streams that are in the land undeveloped and clean. That was environmental protection, I think, like Commissioner Walbridge mentioned. Yes. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
I just wanted, I wanted to add, and I think in a roundabout way, some of us sort of hit on it, but we really didn't say it out. It was on my list and I missed it. But one thing that we have in our backyard is the state government, and we really need to have a relationship one-on-one with our government and with our governor and things of that nature. I think that's going to be huge for us in Frankfurt as well. So I think that partnership and communication is, is going to be huge for all of the things above.
It's certainly unique. It's the only capital in the state, right? Good. Anything else? So I would like to, to turn our attention just for a few minutes and, and talk about, you know, as we talk about economic opportunity, what are the things that the city and county could do together in terms of, 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 of moving this forward? Are there opportunities on, on infrastructure or on growth and that sort of thing? What are, what are the things it's going to take to, 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 to move this forward? What are, what are you trying to attain? And we've identified the areas. But what, what are the, what are the basics that, that require us in order to get there? And before we go down the rabbit hole of implementation, and I know that's where everybody likes to go. I think that's a whole conversation unto itself and maybe four, five, or six conversations. I'm really looking at the, the higher level, the, the, the city and the county working together on some things. Are there, are there things, are there pieces that only city and county government could help solve in which you could come together? Any thoughts on that? Yes. Mr. Thompson?
Well, anybody that's, that's watched any of our last meetings can attest to. One, one of our issues is waste and recycling. We, we are, we are spinning our wheels trying to make sure we get the best rates and the best services for waste management and for a recycling provider. We are hamstrung a bit, a bit in the sense that we have a set amount of of recycling that we produce. It's a direct line in the way that it goes at this point. And that limits us in the total places that we can go. And as such, we are, we are given a price and that's what the price is and that's, that's how it goes. I'm not even talking about anything that Judge Wells or anybody else talked about with regard to, you know, one government. I'm talking about taking the tonnage of the city and the tonnage of the county with regard to waste and recycling, combining those total amounts and perhaps the cost of running a good waste management and recycling program and, and providing those services to all of the citizens of Frankfurt and Franklin County. You know, in, in Frankfurt, you can live on, on Northwood and you get one set of rules and you have to have everything in, in your, your bags and you have to have, there's all, all sorts of ways that you have to do things. And then one street over, just another street over, you can have, you know, it's a free-for-all every week with regard to trash in the county. So that's one issue. And then, of course, the other issue that's always, that's always confounded me is the fact that as a, as a business owner myself, and I've had other business owners talk to me about this, is we don't, the city doesn't provide any, any waste management in, in the downtown area. And I know a lot of that used to probably be for logistics and things of that nature, but we, we're asking for in large companies, lots of infrastructure and lots of investment in downtown Frankfurt. And the most basic amenity I can think of is, is having a municipal waste management system. So I think that is a, an opportunity for the city staff and the county staff to work together to provide a, a larger tonnage in both so that we are in a better bargaining position and be able to make some decisions to assist everyone. I, I know that right now we're, we're in a position where we're going to have to have upgrades with regard to our waste management vehicles and things of that nature. One of the things that I've brought up in one of our meetings is what's, what's wrong with having to talk about creating our own recycling center? You know, it, it's an investment, but it can be a money-making endeavor for the city and county. And too many times, city and county governments don't operate like businesses should. It's just, well, this is what it costs and we have to pay it. Let's not just try to cut 10% every year. Let's try to make 10% more next year in profits and return it to the general revenues. And I think the first place we could, we can tackle that is in waste management.
Right, thank you.
I agree with Colin Thompson on that.
Mayor Judge, do y'all have any thoughts on, on areas in which the city and county might work together to, to, to move some of these things forward? Or things that, that, that need to be addressed together?
I'll let the mayor go first.
Well, I think a lot of it is, for one, I'm, I'm happy to see, you know, a lot of the time mindset's the issue. And I think we all have the same mindset that Frankfurt is already on the path. And there's just little tweaks could really spring us forward here. But I think we together need to do a better job of telling our story. I think one of the, one of the areas we lack is we don't do an effective job together of telling our story. Whether it's economic development, whether it's tourism, whether it's quality of life. I think we need to together have a, again, a unified voice sometimes to, you know, tell, tell our story outside of the county. And mindset is part of that. Commissioner Thompson said as well, social media, I, I don't think we use it effectively enough together. And I think that's one area that would be low-hanging fruit, so to speak, easy to do, but a super high impact. I think that's an easy box to check off. And I think also working together with Kentucky State. I want to, one of the things I, I wanted to mention that Squire Sebastian mentioned, it was the ag tech and aquaculture with Kentucky State. I think that the farm is out in the county. Boy, that is something that we should really be emphasizing and promoting worldwide. Right here in Franklin County, we have one of the top schools in the country. I think we have the only fermenting and distilling program in the state. And I think that is an area that both the city and county can get behind. And arts and culture, that's another thing, part of the quality of life. Maybe that's tactic and that's one of the things we need to implementation. But arts and culture, I think that's what's going to get people here and keep them here.
Good. Judge?
As, as I think on it, what, what would be beneficial for us and businesses as, as well as a lot of other aspects of our community, and we're hitting on it really hard right now, is planning and zoning. And, and, and part of that is the comprehensive plan. It's been in my mind for several years now that we have two planning and zoning offices, one on each side of the river that, that many, many people don't know which, whether they're in the city or the county or what zoning works for the city, what zoning works for the rural areas of the county. I, I've often thought, why wouldn't we put, why couldn't we, not wouldn't, why couldn't we put the city and, at least the city and county planning and zoning offices, which are separate now, into one building? Where you would have one, where businesses could come in, there was one spot that they could come in and they could meet with the staff. Are you city? Are you county? And, and right there, and then instead of going, many of them come to the county, we send them to the city. They go to the city, they, they're sent to the county. They have to go across the river, then back across the river, then back across the river again. Why couldn't we put planning and zoning in, in one building? Now, could we? Should we? Should we probably look at maybe just having one planning and both cities, a joint planning and zoning department? Those are the kinds of things that I think would be very helpful to businesses and to help, be helpful to our community. Just a thought. I'll throw that out.
I agree with the judge on that.
All right. Let me ask you, are, are there, are there any other things related to business growth or retention that the city and the county could jointly work on? And I'm just throwing things out. Are there, you know, the role, the roles of city and county government are much different than the agencies that, that administer and implement plans and that sort of thing. But what are the things that you could do together to, to help to move this agenda forward? Or at least have discussion about that would be helpful? Yes. Squire Booth?
I think that housing is one of those issues. In discussions I have with some organizations that I'm a member of, we talk about affordable housing. The people that come in to work at jobs that are cost of living jobs, which I think we should guarantee everyone that. And we really do through the social organizations we have. But we could work together on affordable housing and the city, I suppose, could take the brunt of that. Because there are many areas in the city that are left over from when the we had a state prison here for many years and many houses were built in that era. And that could be, one of your city commissioners went on, passed city commissioners, went ahead and did something on that. That is a, a goal that I think is admirable.
All right. Anything else? Someone else have their hand up? A minute ago? Okay. So I, I think that there, you know, the call for the meeting was to try to come to some kind, to have a discussion about what the vision and the future of the community looked like. And, and I think that you have come to some consensus on, you know, these, these seven or eight things that, that, that you can work on together that are important. This call, you can't, we can't make any decisions or take any votes. But I do think that it's important to think about how this moves forward and do you want it to move forward? And so whether that's a, we can't set a date or anything like that. Would you, do you prefer to have a discussion in your separate legislative bodies and then try to, to schedule a date to continue? Or how, how would you like to proceed in moving this forward so that you get to a point where you can actually have your strategic plan and begin to implement? So I see two hands up and I'm going to call on, Squire Mueller, would you go first and then we'll get Commissioner Walbridge?
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Long. So as, as I sit here and listen, everyone has said a lot of great things. But I think it's things that this community's talked about for a long time and then you've touched on implementation. I personally hope this isn't the only meeting we're going to have with these two bodies. I would like to, I would love to see it done quarterly. But I think in order to come up with a game plan and to actually get some traction, you know, I'm almost wondering if a working group, a couple of magistrates, a couple of commissioners, wouldn't be a bad idea to put a committee together to kind of move things along a little faster. So that's just kind of my two cents. I would, I'd be happy to be on that, representing the county if, if they would want me to, if that's an option. So that's just, I'm, I'm throwing that out there because I think it's time that we, we, we get moving and, and start leading this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Commissioner Walbridge?
Thank you. He took the words right out of my mouth. I was hoping to say that this would not be the last meeting. It's taken so long to get this meeting for unforeseen circumstances over the years and over the past few months that we've sort of pushed this. So I would hope that our next meeting would not be as hard to schedule, and I think that it should be on the books for us. We are one community, though we have two governments and we do need to work together. We have to be open and we have to understand that we're here to make Frankfurt and Franklin County better. And we're not here to compete against each other or who can do it first, or who can do it the fastest, or anything like that. We're here to basically, for the city and the county, to complement each other, just like a partner in a marriage or a relationship. You want to complement each other. And that's since we have two governments, we need to work with these two governments and complement each other. But what I also wanted to add, if you don't mind, before I raised my hand, but I know that you were speaking, was that one thing that we do that's an economic opportunity for us and that we should already be working on, which I brought up in a meeting when we were discussing parcels B and C before Bevin had taken that piece of property back, was that, you know, we need to work on our parks. County has one park and then the city has all the other parks. And I think coming together, working with parks is a huge economic booster here in Frankfurt. It's an opportunity with all of those fields that we have, soccer, baseball, football fields. I think coming together with city and county would be a huge economic booster for our community to really sit down and see what Frankfurt and Franklin County want that to be, like, just like in Elizabeth Town or other surrounding areas that are a little further out. You know, I hate driving to Elizabeth Town to have to watch my son play soccer all the time, you know, for these. It's time that we sit down. It's not a competition of who's going to have the biggest park or who's going to do what. It's let's sit down and see who can do what and can we come together to make something greater for Frankfurt and Franklin County as a team versus maybe even duplicating things because we're all not at the table. So I would agree with Squire Mueller as well. I think maybe an executive committee from that would be great for us to continue to have conversations on the side where all of us can't get together because it was sort of hard for us to continue moving forward on that. But I think that will drive our economic, bringing people in to see what Frankfurt has to offer. As the mayor said, they'll be able to hear and see our story as they come in for these sporting events. They will patronize all of our hotels, our gas stations, our restaurants, our shops downtown. So I think that is number, a, a, a number one area on that economic drive. So I apologize, I sort of backtrack, but I wanted to get that in. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, Commissioner Thompson?
No, I, I, I agree with a lot that has been said, and I also agree that these, these are all things that have been talked about for years before. Squire Mueller is, is absolutely right. The difference being is that it's been said in years before and it's been ignored. But you know, from, from my perspective as a numbers guy, you know, I, I'm at the red flags and alarm rate at this point. And I think we have to, we have to take, we have to take what's happening right now and make a determination of is it, is this time that we're going to make hard and big decisions? You know, the, everyone always talks about who, who do we compare ourselves to? You know, should we compare ourselves to Danville or should we compare ourselves to Woodford County or Scott County and Shelby County? And, and those, those communities are growing. And so I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel when we figure out how to make things happen. I, I think we look at how they, they have structured their I, I think we look at how they, they have structured their, their boards and organizations. I think you get stakeholders on those, people who actually make decisions. I think you have to, you have to get the schools involved. If we want our schools to be improved, then we need to tell the schools what, what we need improved on. And we need the plant board involved and we need, you know, the financial institutions and we need law enforcement involved. We need the courts involved and, and we need a lot of people at the table besides just some folks who, you know, may have won a popularity contest and then have, have the ability to make decisions for two or four years. And, and saying that, I will say, you know, in the central Kentucky area, we obviously can't compare ourselves to, to Lexington or Louisville. But we can compare ourselves to the contiguous counties. And one of the statements that was made early on was that we are, we're going by the way of Henry County and Owen County right now. Instead of going the way of Shelby and Scott and Woodford. And, you know, just to give you an idea, over a 10-year period, Woodford County had a 7% growth. Shelby County has had a 14% growth. Scott County's had a 21.1% growth. And Franklin County has a 2.9% growth. So, I mean, that's, that's something that you have to take into consideration. When you start talking about job participation rates and workforce participation. We are, we are the lowest workforce participation rate in all of those counties by far. We have the lowest household median income of those four counties by far. We have the lowest individual income rate of those four counties by far. And when you, when you hear all those things, it's hard to imagine why a company would want to come to Frankfurt or Franklin County, understanding that we have some issues. Our retention issues are, we have been blessed in the sense that we haven't lost everybody because of, of the things that have happened in Frankfurt. And I think that we are going to have to step out and make sure that those companies that have been here for a long time, those companies who are our, our cornerstones, know that they are our cornerstones. And we give them the due respect that they need. But we can't just rely upon them to keep growing to, to give us new jobs. We have to bring in other jobs. We have to bring in the minimum wage jobs too. We have to bring in all sorts of jobs. And we don't have those right now. None of us can get a seat at a restaurant right now because there's not enough help. So we as a community have to figure out, how do we fix that? You know, I, I can go to other communities that are much smaller than ours. I'll pick one out Winchester, much smaller than, than Franklin, Frankfurt and Franklin County. And every restaurant is full on a Sunday. GRC's like a small college campus. You know, we, we just have to figure out what these other communities are doing right. We don't have to have this level of pride that we've had for decades and decades and do it our own way. Because our way isn't working right now. It hasn't worked for a while. So I think we need to stuff the, the pride away and just tackle these things anew. And I'm willing to do it. I'm willing to, to take on any idea there is, any suggestions and, and try to go down that road. And I know with the help of Penny Peebler and, and Mayor Wilkerson and, and Catricia and, and everybody on my team, we, we meet constantly. We are constantly, not altogether. We are constantly meeting with ways of, of helping economic development. And there is no dumb idea in, in economic development. And we want to share all those with you. I think, you know, we're a little limited in the way we're looking at the 30,000-foot view tonight. But, but we want to share what some of those ideas are and what we're thinking. And, and at the same time, we want to bring people to the table that need to hear these things, you know. Our, our schools, they benefit the most out of our tax base. The plant board, they benefit greatly because of the ratepayers. And, and we've got to bring those people to the table. Whether that's in an economic development board or not, I don't know. And, and it doesn't really matter to me. But what I do know is that what we're doing right now with regard to economic development and bringing in jobs and retaining jobs, it's just not, it's just not working. So I think we just gotta, we gotta be willing to tackle things in a new light. And I, I personally am willing to do that and hope you guys are too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Let me ask this question. So mayor and judge, I've always been a, a, a big believer that when you get to a point where you have accomplished the things that you have set out to do in a particular setting, that the next step then is to conclude and get ready to move to the next step. And I, I certainly don't want to shortchange anyone's opportunity to share and put forth their ideas. It sounds like to me, from what I'm hearing, is that there's, there's pretty strong consensus on these several areas. And that maybe a next step is to, for you all to get together and, and figure out if you want to establish a working group or, you know, you want to follow that up with some other kind of discussion. Am I, am I hearing this correctly? Am I on the right page with you all?
I, I think you're, I think you're right. But I, I think we're maybe a meeting or so before we break it down to a working group. I think we've just barely touched, well, we talked about a lot of things, but we didn't go into depth about a lot of things. So I think we're, I think we need to come back as a unit here and discuss more in depth of, of the processes, the, how do we, as someone said, how do we do this? The implementation part of it to see how, what, logistically, how we can come about and work together to, to get it done. But I don't think we're ready, we're at that point yet. But that should be the next step. That's my opinion.
Mayor, how do you feel?
Well, I could see where, I do think a working group is important. I do think that that is ultimately the next step. I'm okay to do one more meeting to, to go more in depth on some of these topics. Because there are others that we, I, I didn't mention jointly that we could work. We have some major potentially transformational projects that both governments are working on right now that are going to impact the entire community. Of course, we have the parcels downtown. County's working on Lakeview Park and then I think any river view, the riverfront development that we do is going to be transformational. So I think all of those things need to be included. We could take this back to our respective boards, court, and then find out if that's something. We want to have another meeting before we have the working group.
All right.
Commissioner May, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, introduce some positivity and, and, you know, things of excitement. And, you know, for me, my viewpoint on all this, you know, the conversation with economic development and talk about, you know, I've heard things like, you know, lack of vision or no vision. And I just want to, you know, go on the record and say I disagree with that. You know, th- this community, our, our city, we, we, we have a master plan to work off of. We have a vision to work off of. And I think right now the conversation should be focusing on, you know, the community engagement piece through, through playing that master plan. The, the experts that we hired to come in and help us formulate that master plan. I think the vision's there. We all agree on that. And that's, that's individually, and then that's from a professional opinion. So to me, the way I view how we move forward and from an efficiency standpoint is we've done the, we've done the research. We've done the data collection. We've done the analytics. Let's focus on that. Let's focus on how we can come together as both governing bodies to make that better. Because, and, you know, we've heard a lot, everybody and I agree 100%. This is a community. It's not a city, it's not a county. It's a community. When, when downtown does well, the county does well. When the county does well, the city does well. We utilize each other's services all the time. I live in the city, I have a Lakeview Park on weekly because it's right there and I have a great connection place to it because there's, there are sidewalks available, there's connectivity available. And I get to utilize both resources and it's phenomenal. So I just want to drive that back. Like, again, we've, I think, heard a lot, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I agree. Pieces are there. It's, we're done, I feel like we're done identifying the problem. We need a resolution. And so I just want to say that, yeah, for me, it's focusing on what we already have. The plans are there. How do we, how do we, how do we make sure that they move forward? How do we keep that focus? And just, just grow together. Wanted to throw that out there, that I, I think it's nothing but positive.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Thompson?
I will say from my end, and with all due respect to the judge, we are ready. I mean, the city's ready. I think, I think if the, if the county magistrates were questioned, like, they'd say the same thing. We, we know what the, what the goals and the visions are. We've, we've paid for all the plans. We've seen all the plans. We've seen the, all the things we should be doing and we're ready to do it. I mean, I, I shudder at the thought of waiting for another joint meeting, which heaven forbid, maybe after the next election. I, I just, I, I say we put a working group together. We make it happen and, and roll from there.
Squire Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Long. And, and I would agree with that. You know, this is something I've kicked out to the community ten months ago. So if you don't think I'm ready, I don't know who's not been listening. I'm ready to go right now. So I'm volunteering for whatever committee that we can put together tonight.
Ted, just as a reminder for the court and the other body, these are great ideas and I love the enthusiasm. It's contagious, but the call is limited to no action.
Yes, that is correct.
Just want to let everybody know.
Thank you. Commissioner Walbridge?
I, I just want to also piggyback, Kyle took the words right out of my mouth and we seem to think alike sometimes. So, you know, this meeting has taken so long, as Sherry said, she's mentioned it 10 months ago. I know Michael Mueller and I and Scott Tracy, and we've mentioned it months and months ago. We mentioned it in a, in previous commission, before our commission now. It's taken this long to get a meeting. So I don't think it would be conducive or in support of, of this forward meeting that we're trying to move forward, to really wait unless we can put a time limit on that when we go back to our perspectives to say, hey, when this next meeting will be. I agree, there needs to be another meeting, whether that's the exec committee that we can put together or if that's what we want in our prospective meetings later on to make that decision. But I definitely think that we need to put a timeframe on when we would like to meet again as a group and not leave it up to just a couple of people planning. Because I, like they, I don't want this meeting to happen after next election. This meeting needs to happen. Technically, I would say a meeting by the end of the year needs to happen, if not within a month or two, because we need to show our community, we're not just needing to meet. We're meeting here, as our mediator is saying, we're meeting here for goals and objectives to move forward. And our community is tired of seeing us move and nothing come out of our meetings. So within that being said, we have to move forward. We have to go back to our perspective, the court as well as city commission, and come up with a deadline of when we want to meet again. So I'm all for it. I think we need to continue this movement and not put it on the back burner again. Our community is tired of being on the back burner. It's time to move forward and start checking these things off.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I, and I don't want to be the arbiter of anything. I do believe that, given the limited scope of the call, that it will require that the, the bodies go back and, and, and meet within themselves and, and make a decision on what they each want to do. But I will say this as a facilitator, having seen some of this, I really appreciate the enthusiasm that, that you've shown and, and the willingness to try to do something. So, Commissioner Thompson, I didn't mean, I didn't want to cut you off. I saw your hand raised. Do you have something else you wanted to add?
I, I understand that, that before County Attorney Sparks, you know, starts giving me death looks, but he won't, he won't turn on his, his camera. He's probably fishing.
No, Mr. Thompson, I'm very much listening to this meeting.
I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the mayor and the judge giving a directive to go back and, and discuss of the form of a committee. I also don't think there's anything wrong with creating an informal discussion group. That doesn't have to be voted on. I mean, that's not even an action. That's just a, it's just a bunch of people saying, hey, let's get together and figure out how we're going to start this. So, you know, I agree, you know, we, we can't, we can't vote to raise Rick Sparks' salary tonight, but we can absolutely, you know, take directives and we can, I think we can make informal decisions without crossing the dreaded Roberts rules of orders.
Any other thoughts?
At this far, I just want to say, I think we, Commissioner Thompson, I think there is a certain amount we can do. And certainly in our Board of Commissioner meetings, we do offer directives to staff. And I think if you all were to tell staff you wanted to put this on a, an agenda, an upcoming agenda for discussion, we would certainly do that. It seems like we are getting that directive anyway. And I don't think we're going to miss that in any way, shape or form in understanding how you all want to move forward.
Slister Ross, does that, does that prevent us from even setting a date right now for a future meeting?
My understanding, and I will of course defer to, to Mr. Sparks' directives and, and advice to his body. My understanding is that, no, it does not. We actually could set an administrative task such as setting a date for, for a future meeting or at least heading in that direction. We, that, the attorney general has said we can make administrative decisions as long as they are not touching on substantive issues. I do think it's a very, very slippery slope. And we need to be careful and maybe not go much further than discussing potential dates. And, and honestly, I think the best course of action would be to bring it to our very next meeting to settle that.
I like slippery slopes. Rick, how do you feel?
I, I, I think we're all going in exactly the right direction. I, I would be, because of, of the nature of the call and the brave new world of doing meetings like this, not want to go too far afield. My suggestion was going to be that the court addressed this at our next meeting, which is the 24th. If the judge's pleasure to put it on the agenda and allow the judge and the mayor to attempt to coordinate sort of the parameters of a discussion group. There was a lot of, there were various titles of, of that group, but something to that effect. And allow them to do that. And then each body, of course, is going to have to be at the mercy of the, the schedule as to when and et cetera, to have a special meeting. That, that got a little complicated, you know, big world it does. But there's a whole lot of topics that got brought up here that each body's going to have to address individually in their separate, separate chambers and separate conduct or separate discussions. First and foremost, though, to follow it up, to do it officially is, is that could be done on the 24th with that membership of the, of the committee. And then just see how it shakes down from there. So I, I agree, but it, it, we, it could be done relatively quickly. They just have to do the background work. And really, it's for the, the judge and the mayor to figure out what the group would constitute, what its task, goals, et cetera, would be, the parameters. And then that ought to be easy, relatively easy thing to accomplish.
Ted? Yes?
For some reason, I, I see myself as frozen, but that's okay. That means I'm not getting older. I, I, I definitely see that, I see, and I agree with Rick, we can put it on the 24th. And if the, the question really to me is, if you don't mind, and this is actually to the mayor as well, is this, are we considering doing a, a working group as opposed to coming back and meeting as a total group? Or are we talking about meeting, coming back and meeting as a total group and then forming a working group? Or third part, do you have both of them going at the same time? So I, I do think our next meeting is, is on the 24th, but I'm not sure on the direction on what the mayor and I should be working on to. but I'm not sure on the direction on what the mayor and I should be working on to present to the, to the bodies.
I think that's what we're going to, you and I are going to have to work out. But I think, you know, our meeting's going to be on the 27th. So I think that we, we know our deadlines now of when we have to have something ironed out. So I think that's when we work with our respective boards and, and decide, you know, is it going to be working group versus a joint meeting? Or like you said, concurrently? I think all three of those things are probably going to happen. I think working group and joint meeting are going to happen relatively soon, but in what order? I think that's something we have to put some thought behind. But 24th for you all and then the 27th for us, it's a couple of weeks.
Okay. Mayor, you and I will get, get with each other real soon.
If I could, in, in the, in ways of tying the loose ends up, first of all, as, as a, as a person that has been involved with local government for a long time, I want to say how much I appreciate the effort that you've put into coming together. It's not common. And the second thing I want to say is I want to express my appreciation for your respectfulness and for your, your ideas. It's very easy to see that each of you are committed and passionate about your communities and about your role in public service. So for whatever it means, I thank you for that. I think that from my perspective, that our business has come to a conclusion. I think we've come to a good conclusion. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor and to the judge to conduct the adjournment.
Judge, you want to take it from here?
Okay.
I got to do the introduction.
Okay. All right. From the county side, and we need, it's like the close of any, any other meeting that we have, is there a motion to adjourn? And with, with the understanding that there will be a discussion, a continuation discussion on this, on what we've talked about today on the 24th at our fiscal court meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Squire Moore and a second by Squire Booth. Campbell, will you call the roll? I think Campbell's on. Campbell, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller? Squire Muller?
Does that count?
Yes. Have we heard you?
Okay. Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
On the city's side, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. I asked the clerk, call for a vote.
Mr. Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, and thank you all for your time tonight.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you all. We'll see you next time. This is exciting.
Thank you.